Six and seven. Oh, well, seven we don't need, I'm sorry. Okay. Well, welcome to the April 14th Oklahoma City Planning Commission meeting. Oftentimes, I'm confused about what day it is, but tomorrow's April 15th, and that's usually tax day. And I know we don't have to pay our taxes until, well, Monday this year, so we get a reprieve. If you have pagers or cellphones, I would ask you to either silence those, turn them off, whichever you prefer, so that we're not interrupted during the hearing. If you are not the applicant, and you're here to talk to us about a case today, and you haven't already done so, there are sign-up sheets on the table outside the chambers. If you would complete it for the case you'd like to address us on, we'd be happy to hear you when we hear the case. And with that, we'll go to approval of a series of minutes at this point. New approval, a reception, whatever we have. We're gonna take them one by one this time, Pat, I think, don't we?
We'll do it any way you want to, John.
Okay.
When we get out of there.
How about February 11th first, and we can? So if someone will make a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and second to approve the February 1st minutes. Cast your votes. Those are approved. Thank you. Okay, we'll do, how about March 10th?
I'm gonna receive that if we don't approve it.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion?
Second.
Okay, March 10th, vote, cast your votes. Yes. One more vote, Janice. Well, we need to push your button in over here. There we are, okay. And then 25th. Yes.
Second.
You have a motion to approve the minutes of February 25th. Cast your votes. And that's approved. Do we have second?
Second.
Cast your votes. March 24th minutes are approved. Well, housekeeping is up to date. How about that?
Very good, Bob.
We'll go next to the consent docket. Oh, what did I miss? Oh, continuances, I'm sorry. Let's do those first, uncontested.
Okay, there are five requests for an uncontested continuance. I'm gonna read those on your agenda. It would be item B-20, which is case C-6807, request to defer that to April 28th. Item B-21 for case PUD-1598 to defer indefinitely. Item B-22 for case C-6787 to withdraw. Item B-23, which is case PC-10447 to withdraw. And item B-24, which is case P-10, PC-10450, also withdraw.
Anyone here today to address us on any of the cases just read? Motion, commissioners?
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and second to approve the uncontested continuances. Cast your votes, and they're approved.
We also received three new requests for continuance. It would be for item B-10 for case S-PUD-887 to defer that to April 28th. Item B-15 for case PC-10276 to defer that to May 12th. And item B-16 for case C-6808 to defer to June 9th.
Anyone here to take, today to talk to us about items 10, 15, or 16 on our agenda? A gentleman by the name of Bruce Sankey signed up. The request is to continue the case. You don't have an objection to that? I guess not. Okay. A motion to approval of new continuances. Cast your votes, and the additional continuances are approved. Are there any continuous requests from the public today? Now we can go to the consent docket.
Okay. There are five items on consent which I will read. First item is PC-10448 to rezone 9915 Southwest 8 from I-1 to I-2. Item 2 is case PC-10449 to rezone 9601 West Reno from AA to I-2. Item 3 is PC-10451 to rezone 10102 Broadway Extension from R-1 to O-2. Item 4 is case CE-931 to close 65 feet on Northeast 100th Street, or 165 feet. Item 5 is ABC-851 to do an ABC overlay located at 2166 West I-240 Service Road.
Ms. Cruz? You don't need to come up. It's on the consent docket, so no one objects. It'll be approved automatically. Second. Okay, we have a motion and second to approve items 1 through 5 to consent docket. Cast your votes. And they're approved.
Item 5, under items requiring separate vote. Item 6 is DA-24531. It's a lot split deed approval located at 300 South Mustang Road, and also requesting a variance to the subdivision regulations.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman. My name is Kelly Work, and I am here representing the applicant. My address is 105 North Hudson, Suite 304. And this item has been on the agenda for a couple of meetings. We've just have been continuing it, waiting to get the, at least six members who would be able to vote on the requested variance. The lot that is proposed to be created with this lot split is shown there. It's labeled Tract A. This is at West Reno and Mustang Road, and it's about six tenths of an acre. And the variance that we are requesting, that we are required to have, is the requirement to have access to front on a public street. We will be providing permanent access for this tract through reciprocal access agreements, both to provide access to Reno to the north and to Mustang Road to the west. So we will, through those recorded permanent access easements, have adequate access. And there's sewer and water is, of course, existing already and available at the location. So we would request approval and approval of the requested variance. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Commissioner, no one has signed up. Move approval of the variance. We have a motion and second to approve the variance. Cast your votes, and the variance is approved. Move approval of the application. Okay, we have a motion and second to approve item 6. Cast your votes, and it's approved.
Thank you.
Item 7 is S-PUD-882 to rezone 540 Southeast 82nd Street from S-PUD-548 to S-PUD-882.
Is the applicant here?
Need a motion to move it to the Hill?
We'll just do that administratively, and then we'll see if the applicant appears. Go on to item 8.
Item 8 is S-PUD-885 to rezone 5120 South Cimarron Road from AA to S-PUD-885.
Is the applicant here? Come up, please. If you would, give us your name and address, please.
My name is Stan Horn, and I live at 5120 South Cimarron Road.
Okay, thank you. Tell us a little bit about what you're doing here, or you want to do here.
Well, we live on 160 acres. It's a working farm. We've lived there for 25 years. And we are trying to expand our farm in a sense that, you know, it's still agricultural and everything. We have, we wanna build this barn that will be used as a market for products from our farm, and then we'll also use it as, you know, to rent out for reunions, weddings, and things such as that.
Okay. Commissioners, any questions? We do have someone signed up.
Well, the first question I have is whether you've had a chance to meet with the surrounding property owners and present their, your plans to them, and hear their concerns and questions.
Well, we've met with all of them that live there and everything else. I am aware of a letter that you received. I've tried to reach out to those people, but they've never contacted me back or anything. They just recently, they just recently took on that property in an inheritance. Now, I was friends with their parents and their brother that live there. You know, we've, we've been neighbors, we've helped them out, everything. We've had a good relationship with them. But apparently, these people I've never met in the 25 years that I've lived there, since they've inherited, they haven't ever, you know, been around or anything. And I was under the understanding that they wanted to develop that and put houses in that property. So I'm a little, you know, kind of, you know, I don't understand that letter.
But you have visited with the other surrounding neighbors and property owners in the area?
Everybody, it's a well-known thing that we're gonna do out there.
Thank you.
Everybody that's been out there has liked it and said they really liked it, and they, they were gonna do business with us and stuff, so.
Thank you.
Okay, Donna Hale? If you'd come up, please. And give us your name and address. Are you?
I'm Donna Hale, and I live in Weatherford, Oklahoma. And I grew up on that farm there. And I did inherit the land that, that is just south of his building. And my intentions may be to put a house out there when I retire myself. So, I mean, I know there's a talk a lot about, you know, putting other houses there, but my intention was maybe for me to move out there. And so my concern is the, you know, that the place is just, is just farmland. It's nothing else out there. And so when I move to the country, I wanna be back into the country. I don't want to have lights everywhere and semen, and, you know, I just, I don't know what else could become of that. Once you rezone it, anything can happen. And so I'm looking for, you know, for the country living out there where I grew up.
Okay, thank you. Any questions of Ms. Hale? Thank you very much.
Yeah, I'm just also saying, you know, maybe it may devalue the property. There'd be more people out there, you know, I don't, I don't know. I, you just don't know what can happen once this is rezoned.
Ms. Hale, how many acres do you have?
Okay.
How many acres do you have?
I have 30.
Okay, all right, thank you.
The, the only thought, parking are you putting in? Excuse me, John.
You'll turn into our existing drive, and once you go past the building, the parking will be behind the barn itself. You won't even notice it unless somebody's actually parked out there. And when we do do this, we'll put up a wall of hay so that you won't even see the, the cars back there. That will be, you know, if people can take pictures out there and that sort of thing, and never see the cars or anything. Yes, gravel, like she requested, you know, to keep everything agriculture. Well, that's what we wanna do. And so we don't want, you know, concrete and all that. We have, we want, we want it to be just as farm-friendly as it can be.
Any other comments, commissioners? It just seems sort of a remote place for a wedding, but maybe, maybe not.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna move for approval.
Okay. We have a motion and second to approve item 8. Cast your votes. It's approved.
Item 9 is S-PUD-886 to rezone 8200 Northwest 10th Street from R-4 to S-PUD-886.
Hi, my name is Yun Ma Buie. My address is 10-500 21th Vons. I'm here to request the rezoning of this lot to commercial. At the moment, I would like to have a storage warehouse built at the very far back of the lot and propose for a retail site in the future development.
Commissioners, no one's signed up. Questions, comments?
Do you agree with the technical evaluations in the, in the report?
Yes.
Okay. Move approval.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 9. Cast your votes. It's approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 10 was continued. Item 11 is PUD-1609 to rezone 10600 Northwest 21st Street from R-2 to PUD-1609.
Good afternoon, David Box, 522 Call Core Drive, here on behalf of the applicant. We have a PUD in front of you today that has, has been working for quite some time. As you see, the zoning as it is today is already R-2. What our PUD seeks to do is to make it a R-2 PUD that would allow our lot coverage to go from 50% to 65%. The property is already platted, and we initially were building homes, and it already started construction on several homes, when it was identified that our lot coverage was, was a problem. You can see the lots that border the outside of this track. It has an extra wide utility easement, so the problem wasn't identified until we got to those interior lots. So we did go before the Board of Adjustment to seek a variance on the first phase. It was already under construction. The Board did grant that variance at the time. We had already applied for this PUD, and we're working with staff, and that's where we are now before you. So the nature of the request is to allow the 65% lot coverage rather than the 50% lot coverage. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Discussion, comments? No one's signed up?
Move approval.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 9. Cast your votes. It's approved.
Item 12 is case C-6786. Are we on 11? I thought I just read 11. Okay, I'm sorry. Item 11 is PUD-1609 to rezone 10600. I think that's what I just read. I read 11 when we heard 9? Or am I, we just?
No wonder, I just hit the wrong damn.
Sorry, you guys. Okay, so really, we're on item 11? Item 12? Okay, thank you. That was item 11. I'm gonna get it right now. We're on track. We've got it. Got each other confused. Okay, item 12. C-6786, the preliminary plat of Bentwood Villas, located west of 1, Highway 152 and south of Southwest 59th Street.
Good afternoon, Mark Grubbs. Grubbs consulting on behalf of the applicant. What we have before you today is a, a preliminary plat for a development that conforms to the PUD that was recently approved. We are asking for a variance to item number 2 due to the limited access to ODOT right-of-way, and also it being a gated community. Be happy to answer any questions.
I really kind of have struggled with this application, and it has to do, of course, with the issue of, you know, lots versus units. You know, we're, we're being asked to vote on a variance here because of the difference between 32 and 30 lots, but what it seems like to me, we're really looking at here is the difference between 64.
And 30.
Units and 30. And so I thought I might ask staff, I mean, is there something I'm missing about that? I know that the language is actually crafted in terms of lots, but, I mean, isn't it, wouldn't units be sort of the more practical way to look at what we're talking about here?
Right, and we talked about that last time, and maybe looking at fixing the subregs in that manner. It, the subregs do just talk about lots, number of lots at this point. And we pointed out early in the report, we're talking, there are 64 units.
I mean, I guess I'm asking you, is there some particular reason? Am I missing something here? Is there some reason why we should look at this differently than I'm looking at it? Because it really seems to me it's more about the 64 units than it is about the 32 lots. In the point, the point of the variance.
The point is, yeah, you're looking at a double what the subregs would allow.
But it is the way we've always looked at these types of applications.
Right, the subregs says number of lots.
We're not, I mean, we would be treating it different than we've looked at every one of them that have come before us before.
But they're still, they're still having to speak the variance, so.
And I'd also point out that when we came to you before with the PUD, we actually showed more lots. Nothing was ever said at that time. We've always said it was gonna be a gated community. There's always been limited access to State Highway 152 here, and that's why we've always proposed what we did. We backed off that density, so.
I think we're bound by the subregs in terms of what the literal language is. We're talking about amending the subregs to go to dwelling units or units or something, which would actually get at the intent of the subreg. So that change will be forthcoming, but does not affect us here today.
I agree with you, Mr. Chairman. However, the variance that is being requested is for more than what the subregs allowed for one entrance, 32. It's 30 or above. And so just because we can't deal with that issue yet, it needs to be drafted and approved, you know, to change those from lots to units. Still, there are 32 lots. It's in excess of what the subregs require.
We have, though, routinely granted variances when there's a one or two or three lot difference, not when there's, not when it's substantial, but we've done that in the past. It doesn't mean we have to do it again. I'm just giving some history. I'm not saying that, trying to direct the vote, I don't.
I might also say that the, the subregs expands to say that if you have a divided entry with a way around that, that you could have up to 100 lots on a single entry. In this instance, you have two lots directly in front of that, so you literally have, you literally have 15 on each side of the entry with a divided entry, a single divided entry. So we've tried to do our best. What's that? We do have a divided entry. That's correct. You can see by the width of the.
Well, what's the pleasure of the commission?
I'll move to approve the variance.
And it is approved, 5 to 4. Oh, variance takes 6. That's exactly right. There you are. Variance is not approved. Someone wanna make a counter motion? Yeah.
Well, we would ask for your approval without the variance, then. We've been up here four times because of not enough attendance to get this variance passed, so we ask for your approval. We meet the.
Well, with full attendance, you didn't get it, so there we are. So we've got a motion to approve it, minus the variance or deleting the variance. Is there a second?
What would be the effect of that vote?
30 lots. Pardon?
We're voting, we're.
The motion is to approve item 12 without the variance, which means we're talking about 30 lots. That's the motion. Cast your votes. It's approved.
I'm just not sure. We summarily passed these two, three-lot variances. I'm not exactly sure.
I agree.
Why this one was.
That's a problem for me.
So controversial, frankly. So just a statement of policy, this happens with 35 lots, 40 lots. So I, I don't get it, I guess, is what I'd say to my fellow commissioners, so.
But I think, I think that a voice needs to weigh into this, and that's the fire department. You know, you've got, you've got really 64 units in this one little spot, and to get the fire trucks in and out and et cetera, you know, I mean, there's a lot of other issues, I think, that needs to be looked at in addition to the research on the subregs revision. But, you know, who's there and why is this, and what's the best policy?
Well, just to the point, fire looked at the application and made no comment with respect to that.
Well, and you can have 100 for one entrance.
I mean.
With a divided entrance. I mean, that's what our ordinance says.
Okay, case item 13 is PUD-1610 to rezone 9500 Northeastern Avenue from R-1 to PUD-1610.
Greg Massey with Red Plains Professional in Adman, Oklahoma, representing the owner and applicant. This PUD, I believe the document that was just passed out to you this morning has some modifications from the one that went out with the original packet. Some of those modifications include eliminating some additional uses. We, we took out actually a total of eight additional uses, some of those which were originally requested. And the staff report, and then after conversation with Dr. Cooper, went ahead and eliminated a couple of other uses that he felt might be objectionable. So the current report that you have should reflect that. In addition, we have voluntarily increased the landscape buffer adjacent to the residential district from five feet to 10 feet. It still includes the landscape planning and site-proof fence, as well as increased a, or provided for a 10-foot landscape buffer adjacent to Eastern Avenue. Another item that was not included in the original document that was delivered this morning is a, an additional building setback adjacent to the residential properties of 35 foot for all structures. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that y'all may have.
Mr. Massey, can you tell me what additional uses have been eliminated? I apparently don't have the last report. Tell me what you've taken out, please.
Yes. Excuse me, I didn't bring my reading glasses. The convenience sales and personal services, that's 8300.32. Eating establishments, actually, all the eating establishments have now been eliminated, including fast food, 8300.35, and sit-down, no alcohol permitted, which was 8300.37. Food and beverage retail sales, funeral and interment services, alcoholic beverage retail sales, and all animal sales and services, both grooming and kennels and veterinary restricted.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate having that. Lee, any comments?
Yeah, I had a question, really, JJ, maybe for staff. I'm really familiar with this area, and perhaps, I guess, maybe the animal sales and grooming. Given the nature of that area and that particular, just, just a couple of miles, you're talking, I know a kennel and several animal rescue places and all of that, that, I just, I just question whether or not that, that area would still be, it would be conducive, it seems like to me, for at least the grooming and sales part of this. And if the applicant would, would be amenable to adding that back, I think it makes sense for that area to have that. I don't wanna continue that to be a dumping ground for, you know, where, where we don't want things in, in the city, but if that one thing could be added back to it, would you be amenable?
Yes, just the grooming.
Just, yeah, that's the animal sales and grooming.
And services, grooming, the 8300.8.
Yeah.
We would have no objections to adding that back in.
I don't have any questions anymore. Move for. I don't have any questions anymore. Move for adoption.
Do we have a second? We have a motion and a second to approve item 13, adding back in animal grooming and sales. I assume that means small animal grooming and sales, but cast your votes, and it's approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Item 14 is SPOD 883 to rezone 3720 North Penn from O2 and R4 to SPOD 883.
Hello, I'm Steve Landy, Land Run Engineering, Shawnee, Oklahoma, 201 West 9th, Shawnee, Oklahoma. This property, like I said, is a SPOD, part of what we have, if you're familiar with this area, in 2005, there was a single apartment unit built on the north side that's existing to date. It was partially completed but never completed. The project kind of fell apart, I guess, in the middle. Bryce, the group back here have actually purchased the property, want to cut, basically complete it as partially that was originally intended. They're going to make some modifications to that building, as well as to add the second unit, you know, to the south. And we've done some, a few things on this property to kind of include, kind of modernize it from the original plans that were done, because we had to resubmit it. Part of it, we've added, it's basically a security fence and a walking trail, kind of a gated entrance for that area, as well as we've added like a little dog park, a few amenities, you know, for the people that would stay there. They really picture their clientele to be potentially the college students in that, you know, general area, as well as, you know, part of their clientele, there's, between Thunder and there's people that come into this area, you know, there's maybe some efficiency units that'll be designed for those purposes as well. That was part of the reason for the gated approach. Other than that, I think it's a pretty good development for that area. Any questions? I'll be happy to answer.
Janice?
Well, first of all, let me just say, I could not be any more thrilled that something is going to be done with that building, like a thumb in my eye every time I drive by there. But I have some questions about the application that I don't yet have answers to, including, how many units are we actually talking about here?
Well, I think, there he is. This is Bryce Barfield with Red.
Hi, I'm Bryce Barfield with Red River Homes, 208 South 9th in Tecumseh, Oklahoma. The, the first building, the original building that was there is 22,000 square feet. I haven't looked at those plans recently, but I believe that first building was 19 units. The second building is 16,500 square feet, two-story, and it's got 16 units. The first, the first building that was there, the interior of the building, nine, 10-foot ceilings downstairs, nine-foot upstairs, the rooms are vaulted ceilings. This was the original plan and intent of this was some kind of townhome-style apartments. Going to be a really nice place. We're going to have the same features in the second building, which will be 16 units.
Okay. So you, you do plan to mimic the exterior finishes on the existing structure for the new building?
Yes, ma'am. The plans are the same. Sam Gresham has finalized our new set of plans. We have everything in place and ready to go. We've updated the plans to follow the 2009 building codes. It was previously done under the 2003 building codes. We've got a few adjustments to make in some of the rooms to meet ADA compliance, and we've taken care of that with Sam Gresham. He's got us taking care of. Plans are ready to submit.
So I count 65 parking spaces on the plan that I have here. Is that accurate?
I'd have to go back and count again, but probably so. The, I do recall we were, I think we have as many, if not more, than was originally planned with the original development. So we've actually, I think we've gotten the same number, and I think we've reviewed that and it meets codes. Really, two or three of the other items that are affected on this property, I can't recall if they changed the building line along the front or purchased additional right-of-way. Okay, so when they purchased the additional right-of-way, now that existing building is actually falls within the 25-foot building line. So that was one of the, kind of a variance we were writing this part on.
But they're, they're giving you that, aren't they?
Yes, yes.
To, to let you have your building, a line across the front.
Correct. Everything's, everything should be good on all of that. Matter of fact, that was kind of the city's recommendation to do this as SPOD, instead of looking at the type of zonings and looking for a board of adjustments.
So I guess part of my question then would be to staff, how are we on our parking? If we've got, if we have 35 units and 65 parking spaces, I'm not counting the four out front that they say in the TES they can't have?
They'll, they'll have to meet the parking requirement, whatever that is, and that depends on the, the units themselves.
So we're not, we're not cutting them any slack on the parking?
No.
Okay. Then the only other really, and I don't know, the only real problem I have, and, you know, again, I couldn't be any happier that something's being done with this, but I noticed that where you have your dumpster placed, on the site plan that I'm looking at anyway, is right at the back fence of the property to the east.
We've, we've struggled a little bit with that ourselves. One of the things we'd looked at was try to move it down into the southeast corner a little bit to try to work in that area. It was a little tight in there as well. What we really looked at, at that location, we, we actually have a walking trail that'll run behind it, and we'll try to secure it and go ahead and screen it really well. But it also kind of centralized between the two units for, I'd say, easy access from both units at that point.
Yeah, I mean, I get that. It's, it's a tight site, and as I was looking at the plan that you have put forward, I, I can't say that another spot for it just really jumps out at me. It's awfully difficult for me to vote to approve parking that thing on somebody's back porch, though. I mean, I really, really have a, I don't suppose we've heard from those people, though, halfway. Is there anybody signed up to speak?
No, no one has signed up, and you're right, we generally try and keep dumpsters 50, 25 to 50 feet away from residential property lines, not residential houses. And the reason for that is dumpsters tend to get messy, and they tend to break, and the lids tend to fall off, and.
They tend to pick them up at 5 o'clock in the morning.
If you'll give me a moment. We had initially have this located in the southeastern corner of the property. You'll see a little square area there. We can move this dumpster down to that area. We had just relocated it there, like Stephen said, because of location for both sides of the property for people's access. Otherwise, these folks are going to have to walk from one end of the property all the way to the other. We can easily move that down to the other corner and give, give our, we have a five-foot walking path around the entire project, so you can see that we can have that 25, we can get within 20 feet off of the property to make that work. We can do it at an angle so that the dump, the, the truck can get that. So we can use that far corner there if that makes everyone more agreeable to that location.
I think it would. And if there's not anybody else that wants to be heard, or commissioners who wish to speak, I'm going to move approval. I want to come to the open house. I look at this building like twice a day as I drive past it.
Well, you have a second?
Second.
Moving the dumpster.
Moving the dumpster.
Right.
Okay.
Thanks.
We have a motion to approve item 14, moving the dumpster to the southeast corner. Cast your votes. And it's approved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, very much.
Thank you.
I'll invite you to the open house.
Items 15 and 16 were continued. Item 17 is KC 6804, the preliminary plot of Kingsbridge Estates located south of Southwest 104th and west of South Council.
Good afternoon. Jason Spencer with Craft and Toll here on behalf of the applicant. So what we've got in front of you is the preliminary plot application for Kingsbridge Estates. It's located South Council, or, sorry, west of South Council and south of 104th Street. It's approximately 48 acres. We're proposing 42 single-family lots in accordance with the RA zoning. We've got approximately 12 acres of common area. There will be public water. They will be on private septic systems, individual septic systems. At this point, the, the site does have some flood plain to the south of it, which would be contained within either a common area or private drainage unit. We're not plating lots in the floodway. There was some protest letters sent in, and we've since agreed to go ahead and extend the east street all the way over to Council to make another tie-on to Council. And I think that that should take care of most of the neighbors' concerns. I think a few of them may be here. In association with that, I've got a, this is kind of the revised layout showing that road being extended. There is T, T number three, that we're going to agree with to extend that road.
And you'll line up with Southwest 109, 109th?
We've got it set up to line up with the street, directly across the street there.
That's my question.
That's 109th, yeah. And that's also at the crest or atop the hill, so for side distance, that makes sense. So we basically, we meet subdivision regs, we meet with the RA zoning, which is the current zoning. We agree with the Ts, and we'll ask for your approval.
We have a number of people who want to talk to us, so we'll, I'm going to just take you in the order that, I've got the slips here, and if someone who is with your group who has spoken about a particular issue before you, we prefer you not repeat it. Give us new information as you come up. That will help us. The first name I have is Carissa Sushi, Sashi, apologize for the pronunciation. I guess that's Brian behind you.
This is my husband, yeah, and I'll let him speak. I'll help.
Brian Suki, this is Carissa Suki. We have the lot at 10700 Oak Splinter, currently building. Some of the concerns we have, the development for a contiguous placement of another, well, I guess the Phase 3, but since it's not actually Cedar Creek, it's not going to be Phase 3. It's not contiguous anymore. Our big concern is having Oak Splinter connect to that. It's not the same neighborhood. We don't want the extra construction traffic. We would ask that the water main not be tied into to drop pre-existing homes in there from a 5/8 meter that they're already tied to, to drop that water pressure. Well, they don't have the choice to go back and add that 3/4 main. We ask that the main get brought down Council, run off his own, own water supply, and not have Oak Splinter through. If he could make that single entry off of Council, split, he could feed all the homes for emergency services, all his private residents in there, without tying through from a different neighborhood, is kind of our concern. Not only construction, resident traffic, but if he, is it going to be gated? Is your establishment gated?
Sir?
Are there plans to?
Sir, we need to be talking to us.
Oh, sorry.
It's okay.
I'm sorry. That was my, our main two, two concerns, the dropping water pressure, the undue traffic. The roads really aren't favorable now. Almost every lot in Cedar Creek is either being developed or fully developed and has people living on it. I think there are three right now that are started construction. So it's almost at the end of that construction traffic, not only for the noise, the safety of the kids. There's a lot of families running around there. Last thing, every lot in there is an acre. Every lot that he has proposed is under an acre. To tie those in together, I do not want our property value to drop, getting tied into that. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric Berger, is that correct?
Yes, it is Berger. Thank you for not butchering that, as most people do. I would just like to continue what Brian had to say about the, the traffic. We all have rather small kids and the, the extra traffic that comes in there. Also, we did not, back in September, the builder had, or the developer had a meeting with our neighborhood, spoke to us about, he was wanting to have it rezoned so that he could make smaller lots. Many of us were not in favor of, of that. However, we, we agreed to not contest it, be it kind of a gentleman's agreement, that he agreed that he was going to put a crash gate up on Oak Splinter, and that was only going to be accessible by emergency services only. Emergency services, the fire department is, drive is about, about a mile and 3/4 to the southeast, which means any fire department traffic would come in through the council entrance anyways, would not, would not come off of 104th.
Might do the same thing to get to your neighborhood, too, depending upon which lot and where.
Possibly. But again, our, our main concern is, is the traffic for our kids. We, 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 my, I particularly bought the, that lot in that neighborhood because the developer that owned it, that was selling the lots, told us that he was not going to ever do Phase 3, that he purchased it to use for his cattle. He currently lives on the north side of 104th, and he actually had told us that that would never be developed. He was going to use it for his cattle forever. But he would make sure that it was not accessible.
Forever is a long time for anybody to promise you anything.
I understand. I understand.
If somebody says never or forever, you can probably discount the comment entirely, but you should know, I mean, that generally our subdivision regulations encourage connection between neighborhoods and communities, rather than sealing them off for a variety of reasons, including traffic relief, public safety, and.
I, I understand. And actually, again, when he had the meeting with us in September, he had informed us that he wanted a gated community, that there would be a gate out on Council Road, and that the, the residents of that community would, would have to enter off Council Road, and it, again, would be a gated community. And therefore, he was going to put in his words a crash gate on Oak Splinter.
Thank you for your time and your comments, both. Jason, I'm going to, Jason, I'm going to get your nas, your last name wrong. P U D E R? How do you say that?
Puter.
Puter?
Like the metal.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say the same concern as the other two, mainly the traffic in the area, as well as the safety for our children. The notice for this hearing that we received from the city wasn't different than what I've seen now today with the access to councils. That's encouraging. I would ask if this is approved, that possibly maybe some speed limit signs or like slow children play signs be added to, to the sound of creek conditions. The only thing I would have.
Those aren't bad suggestions. They're not under our purview. The City Traffic Commission deals with that. They approve stop signs, speed limits, and so forth, but that would be the place to address that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Haley Voiles. Something new for us? Give us your name and address, please.
Do I?
Say name and address, please. Go ahead.
I am homeowner at 10620 Oak Splinter Lane. We understand, you know, encouraging of connectivity through the neighborhoods, but I think that would be more along if this was continuing Cedar Creek, but it's not. It's a totally separate neighborhood. They want to be a separate neighborhood, as do we. I think, I've had multiple phone conversations and, as well as our meeting in September with the developer, and they said that they did intend on this being a gated community, and we were told, you know, that there would be no traffic on Oak Splinter Lane whatsoever, no construction traffic, no additional neighborhood traffic, because they were planning to be their own neighborhood. So then, of course, when we all got this letter, it was a little bit of a panic. We just asked that, because this is a separate neighborhood, that we, we don't want to be connected whatsoever. And if they end up doing, you know, gated community over time, we don't know how that affects us as far as our roads being maintained by the city, and then those becoming private roads. Where does the line get drawn between Cedar Creek and, you know, we, we just, we have no intention of wanting to connect with them, and I know that they don't want to connect with us either. They want their own neighborhood, hence, you know, Kingsbridge Estates. And so, I just, we have a lot of small kids. We really enjoy our neighborhood as it is, and there's really nothing else out within about four square miles of our homes, and it's a quiet community, and we'd like to keep our traffic that way, keep our kids safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Darren Leslie? Darren Leslie?
Darren Leslie, resident at 8208 Southwest 107th Street, and I don't really have anything to add. I agree with everything they say. The one thing that I do want to point out is there are currently not sidewalks in Cedar Creek, and the drainage ditches probably do not allow for sidewalks, so that adding all of those additional properties does have a little bit of a safety concern for all the kids, so.
Thank you.
I'll look that up.
Okay, commissioners?
I just have a question, if I could. This is not gated, correct?
No, not at this time.
No gate?
Public streets, yes.
Not at this time, so you don't intend to put a gate in? Is that fair to say?
It's fair to say.
All right, so then now the Cedar Creek area now has an additional access to Council with your new proposal, right?
That is correct.
And so several neighborhoods in Oklahoma City connect to each other. I mean, it's very common, and that is generally our policy for these neighborhoods to have connection. But I do see, while I respect the traffic concerns, I understand that, but I also see a similar argument that the new neighborhood can make with respect of the other neighborhood from the connectivity issue. I mean, I guess it kind of cuts both ways. I understand both sides of this story, but I do think that there's also some benefit to an additional access to Council Road to the exist, for the existing neighborhood. So, just like that.
What kind of, what kind of septic systems are you going to have?
It'll be the aerobic systems.
Okay. And your lot sizes are?
We meet the 30,000 square foot minimum, which is in excess of the half acre required.
On all, on all your lots?
Yes.
All of your lots are 30,000 square feet?
Yes. And just to touch on some items that were brought up, I know one of the first items was the water pressure out there. We will be required to extend water from Council over to the system, so it'll create a loop system through the addition. It should, if anything, benefit their water system. And then, there's been a lot of talk about Oak Splinter Drive on the, obviously, I'm sorry, Oak Splinter Lane. On the previously approved preliminary plat, which was dated back in 2002, there was shown a, a street coming down through there and then it connecting over to Council. I know it's been some time, and I can't speak for what a previous developer told some of the clients, but it is public street, and, and we are agreeable to connect our street onto Council, and that would be our main entrance, but we do need the additional connection for access. We are agreeable to make, make sure our construction traffic does enter the addition off of Council, so that ought to keep the, the big trucks and some of the damage off the internal streets there. I think that covers on my end. Do you guys have any questions?
Anything else, commissioners? Any question?
Well, I, I completely understand the concerns of the neighbors to the north, and it's pretty typical that we have the same concerns and we have a new neighborhood going I am glad that we're extending the road to, that you're considering extending the road to Council. I think with that in mind, and with, you know, what I would like to see is a commitment to keep construction traffic out of Cedar Creek, to find some way to do that. We've done it other places. I know you can do it, if you just think about how to, how to do that. But with that in mind, I'll move for approval of the application.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 17. Cast your votes, and it's approved.
Thank you.
Item 18 is KC 6805, the preliminary plat of South Portland Commercial Park located north of southwest 104th and east of South I-44.
Hi, I'm David Jones with the Ryan Group Engineering. I'm on, here on behalf of the applicant. What you have in front of you is a preliminary plat for a tract of land in the southwest portion of Oklahoma City, Cleveland County. We're looking at developing seven commercial lots under an existing PUD, PUD 891. Also, this is the same tract that currently has under construction a Walmart Supercenter. So I'm here to address any questions. And I also have a request for a variance for one of the TEs. I had a opportunity to meet with the folks from Traffic Management this morning, Shu Rchai, on the limits of no access, and were able to discuss with them a reduction between lots four and five to allow for a singular access into lots four and five north off southwest 104th Street.
No one has signed up, commissioners, and the Traffic Department has met with the applicant, and the agreement as to the access on 104th has been agreed to. 100, yeah, so.
It's not entirely clear. Are we suggesting that there should be some sort of adjustment to TE 5?
Yeah. What's it supposed to say now? Were you deleting TE 5, or?
Well, no, we're modifying it.
It's being modified.
Yes, only being modified to allow a gap between the limits of no access that's shown on the document that you provided by Traffic Management, to allow for a singular access point split between lots four and lots five. But the remaining portions of the limits of no access along southwest 104th remain.
Stay in place.
I guess I got it.
No, no one's signed up, commissioners?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 18 with the adjustment to TE 5, as agreed with the Traffic Department. Cast your votes, and that's approved. Thank you.
Item 19 is KC 6806, the preliminary plat of Fountain Lake, located north of Memorial Road and west of Eastern Avenue.
Hello, David Jones, the Ryan Group Engineering, here on behalf of the applicant. Well, what, what we're looking at there is the previous plat, but that being said, what we've got is a preliminary plat to allow for the expansion of an existing mini-storage facility on the north side of Memorial Road, west of Eastern Avenue, and we agree with all the TEs that were provided.
And no one's signed up, commissioners? Move for it.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve item 19. Cast your votes, and that's approved as well. We have to go back and check on item 7.
Right. S.P.U.D. 882?
Yes. The applicant's still not here? Suggest a two-week continuance?
Move to continue it for two weeks.
To the 28th? Okay. We have a motion and a second to continue item 7 to the April 28th. Cast your votes, and that's approved. That concludes the...
I just had a question. I know this application, number 15, had asked, I guess, for continuance until 5/12, and just wanted to know, are they moving? This has been going on for years now, and we asked them to come back with the PUD, and you just, just want to get, see, are they moving through the process? Because we keep continuing this over and over, and...
We think so. We called and talked to him before the meeting, and he said he was ready to have it heard. And then just yesterday, we got a call that he was ill. So my suggestion would be that next time, possibly recommend an indefinite continuance. Or, or specific denial, let's just vote. I mean, how long are we going to deal with the same application unchanged?
Specifically, Commissioner Cooper was asking whether he has filed a PUD or S.P.U.D.
No, he intends to proceed with this application.
Yeah, okay, so no, he's not moving through the process. He hasn't done anything to modify his, his application. And I suppose we might, you know, in an abundance of generosity, continue this two more weeks, but, you know, if he's ready to move forward, I think I am, too.
We've already continued it earlier in the meeting.
So are we going to vote on it now?
No.
Oh, we've already continued it, I'm sorry.
Yes, on the 12th, on the 12th, on the 12th is like the drop-dead deadline, so it's already been continued, so.
I think the message, JJ, to him is that we intend to hear it and act on it on the Okay. Commissioners, additional items? Planning Commissioner members, anything from anyone today?
We had great meetings this morning. We missed some of you, but I think, I think, you know, we took good action, things will continue to move forward and come back to us, and you'll see it all. You'll get your chance at it, so.
Well, and we welcome Gary to the board in the Ward 5 seat. Happy to have you aboard. Thank you. Planning Department? Development Services? Municipal Counselor? Citizens to be heard, or we just observed? If there's no other business, we're adjourned at 2:31.